Yes, we did turn it on.
Man.
It is warm in here.
It hadn't been on. I told Terry to turn it on, so it's on now. Set for seventy-two.
All right. Welcome to the annual candidate forum. Glad to have a crowd here with us and all of our candidates for the city commission to start off with, and then following the commission will have those who are running for the school board. We'll follow them, we'll have some questions for them. I'm Steve Johnson, I'm the chairman of the Leadership Development Council, and I'll serve as the moderator for tonight's event. I'm also a working manager at College and Fresh Marketing Communication for the college. We have a series of questions from the general public that were submitted through the Globe and K-Radio and to the chamber that I'd like to answer all of those questions, but in the interest of time, obviously, we're going to, you know, share that out. So the council has...
Thank you. The council has picked up and narrowed that down to an introduction and then seven other questions. And we're going to ask for a one-minute introduction from each of you, and then we'll have a two-minute time limit on the questions, so fairly short, but you can actually say quite a bit in two minutes. That seems like a short amount of time, but actually, when you're speaking, it's a lot... Your timekeepers are over here, and they're going to show you, I guess, the yellow when you're getting close, or the red to stop, so I want you to wrap it up.
[laughing]
So we'll begin with the six candidates vying for three positions on the Atchison City Commission. First of all, we'll ask you to introduce yourself and tell us why you want to serve on the city commission. We'll start on this way and go across, so Luke, you're up first.
Okay. First of all, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Atchison, for coming here tonight. Thank you for considering me as an Atchison City Commissioner. My name is Luke Justnowski. I know that last name's a handful, but let me help you with it. It's Just Now Ski, or just call me Luke. A little about me, I've lived in Atchison most of all my life, went to grade school here, went to high school here, worked for the city as a heavy equipment operator, and did some construction here in town, and then went on to aviation, and been flying since. With the help of some local people, my wife and I built our dream home here in Atchison. We raised three beautiful kids, and through all my travels, I've stayed here in Atchison and just love this town. My mission is to enrich the quality of life for all citizens, to build an attractive, inviting, secure community. I believe strongly in public participation. I encourage the city of Atchison to come to city commission meetings. I've told the people, "Come to the meetings, even if you have nothing to say, the presence is huge." I think it's vital that we work closely with our city's Chamber of Commerce, as it plays a vital role in our city's growth. We also need to work in cooperation with the city commission, county commission, and the city government. I think it's imperative that the city government, county governments work hand in hand. There are some city-county projects out there, and that's great.
Okay, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
The main reason we're here tonight is because there's six candidates for three seats, and I believe it's very important that, for these seats, and I'm committed a hundred percent to fill one of these seats. And just remember, I encourage everyone to get out and vote, April 7th. Comes time to vote, remember Just Now Ski. Thanks again for coming and supporting me for your next city commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Rita, you're up next.
I feel I have experienced the citizens of Atchison's want. I was born here in Atchison, I plan on retiring and living here for the rest of my life in Atchison. I was a city commissioner from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and three, and from twenty-ten to the present. During that time, I was vice mayor for two years, a mayor for two years. I promoted the downtown revitalization on the River Road, and I was on the B-three Bridge Committee, and seeing that that project got done. We have just now finished the recycling here in Atchison, which I'm really excited about. I promote economic development, and I want to keep our taxes down. When I came back on in twenty-ten, the mill levy was fifty-seven point one-eight-one. Now the mill levy is fifty-four point two-three-four. I'm very pro-Atchison. I'm on the beautification committee, I'm on the Salvation Army, I'm on several boards here in Atchison to help with Atchison. One of my biggest things is I want to get Atchison cleaned up here in town, and we're working on that really hard with some new ordinance and some things. And I will be your voice, please vote for me on next Tuesday, and give me a call anytime. I accept phone calls and try to get to the root of the problem for you.
All right, thank you, Rita. Charlie?
I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight. The show enters in the community. I'm Charlie Perdue. I grew up here in Atchison County. I was born here at Atchison. I grew up here, lived here all my life, except for about four or five months. My wife Cindy and I have two daughters, Abby and Jessie Perdue. They attended the Lutheran schools, they graduated from Morehill Mount Academies, and both of them have graduated from Benedictine College. One reason that I want to serve on the board, or I feel like I would be a good candidate for the board, is because I have quite a bit of experience. We're the ones that own the Purdue Farms LLC, which I manage and control. I just think that there needs to be a change made in the Atchison city government. I mean, we're going in the wrong direction. Beautification's fine, we need economy here, and I just think that we need to look at some different views and how we actually spend and tax the money. So, thank you, please vote for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mike Hine?
My name is Mike Hine. I'm from Overland Park, Kansas. However, I did marry an Atchison girl, so... I started out working for Black and Beach, nineteen seventy. I worked in the Civil Sanitary Division, where I designed sewage treatment and water treatment plants. And then I transferred over to the Power Division, and Iotan Station was my first job to design the electrical portion of Iotan. Since that time, I've traveled all over the nation in both fossil fuel and nuclear design and engineering across the United States. We've lived in just about every state in the Union. And last year, when I noticed several boiling water advisories, I said to myself, "I have a tremendous amount of background experience in engineering and technical." You know, I think that I could be helpful in our problems with our water and sewage treatment plants. So I decided, you know, I love Atchison, I love the people of Atchison, I'm going to retire here, too, so I'm gonna give whatever I can to the city and help them.
All right, thank you. Jack?
My name's Jack Bauer. I'm a current Atchison City Commissioner. I'm all about building strategies. You have to know where you've been, where you want to go, and building that strategy is how you allocate your resources properly. And then if you, once you've allocated those property, allocated those assets properly, then you know that you're getting the best value for your money. How can we do it smartly, helping the most citizens at all times? We need to have jobs, we need to make it simpler to open businesses in our community. Those are the things we need to do to move forward. We have a big opportunity here. We're close to the Kansas City market. We are a prime bedroom community. So if we think about our future, we've got to think about how to allocate resources, but we have to do it smartly, and it has to be the resources spent where it affects the most citizens positively.
All right, very good. All right, Dave?
My name is David Hausman. My wife Karen and I moved to Atchison twenty-five years ago, this month. We moved here for the purpose of caring for my wife's elderly aunts. They were schoolteachers. One taught at Martin East for twenty-five years, forty-five years, excuse me. And we, I was a painting contractor in the, both in the St. Louis area and the Kansas City area, and I had the freedom to move my family to Atchison to care for the aunts. So coming here twenty-five years ago, I came to a town that attracted me from the beginning. And I continued as a painting contractor, and over the years, I noticed there were houses in this town that needed badly to be restored. So between painting jobs, I picked up those houses and put them back together, and to this day, I do a rental business. Those houses I've rehabbed, I've rented out. My wife and I have raised eight children in this community, four girls, four boys, and we want to just, this community's been good for us to raise our family, and we just want to give back to this community, and we feel serving on the commission would be one way of doing that effectively.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on into it now, two-minute answers on the following questions. First one, the public just wanted an idea of, how do you understand the role of a city commissioner here in Atchison? We'll start with Rita.
How do I understand it? You take a look at your city packet that you have, you study it, you talk to the city manager and ask any questions. There's been things that have come up in Atchison that I've actually went out to the site or to the neighbors around the area, and went door-to-door and talked to them to get their views on how it was. And so, when something like that comes up, I make sure I know what's going on. Also, for the budgets and all the numbers and everything that come up, with me being a credit union manager for forty-three years, I really know how to read expense reports and numbers and how to calculate them.
Okay, anything else? All right. Role of city commissioner, Charlie?
Well, I guess mainly it goes back, I've got experience with the credit unions also. I was a president of the Eagle Federal Credit Union, which is part of the city's group for almost thirty, thirty-some years. I was with the credit union for almost thirty-five to forty years, and I served as president of the credit union for almost eighteen to twenty. Currently, I serve as the marketing side of it. So I'm familiar with numbers and also with the farming operations. We deal with numbers daily, and strategies and everything. Prior to me, and I am retired here, I worked for the railroad for twenty, or I worked for the railroad for forty-one and a half years. Out of those forty-one and a half years, I served on the Eagle Federal Credit Union, which associated with it as a board member. Also, I served in the position of union reps throughout. I've been in the national negotiations, dealing with labor, contracts, insurances, all kinds of labor disputes. One thing, too, that I think that, that I've seen so far, is I think there's a lack of communication between the commu-, the commissioner body and the public. I don't think, really, they're not listening, or I don't think the proper attention's being given to what the public wants to be heard. They want to do maybe what they think is right, but they don't listen to the public. So I'm going to be a spokesman for that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mike?
I think the city commissioner should be very sensitive to the people. I think the commissioner should represent the people of Atchison. And to do that, he should be talking to the businesses in Atchison, like MGP and others, and finding out what their needs are and talking to the people. We have a very high tax base here in Atchison. I'm concerned about that. However, I'm not advocating we just cut spending, but we need to be a lot more selective in the things that we do approve. I think that all of these things that we'll probably talk about today are good ideas, but are they the best for the time? So the city commissioner represents the people, and the people of Atchison. Obviously, I want to see economic development here in Atchison, and I think the best way of doing that is working with the industry here and talking to Benedictine College. Today, I was talking to MGP, and they said, "We need to get the alumni of Benedictine College to start bringing people here to Atchison to encourage the alumni to come back to Atchison and start businesses here in Atchison, both white-collar and blue-collar workers." So I think the commissioner should be an encourager, and at the same time, be very sensitive to people and their living condition. I think there's a lot of other unrelated problems with a number of poor people that we have here in Atchison. I think the commissioner should be aware of those situations, too. So I'm not saying that we should cut spending, but we should be a lot more selective than what we have been.
Okay. Jack?
If I said I was going to answer this in one word, would you believe me?
As a...
We have a city manager form of government. The only person in the city that I have any influence over is the city manager. I have a one-fifth vote of either retaining him or removing him. He's the one responsible for running the city. Now commissioners are responsible for thinking about the future of Atchison and coming up with the policy issues, and then they have to do some real digging, and I will guarantee you that I'm not afraid to ask tough questions and keep asking until I get the answers I need. And if you get the answers I need, then you're going to get value in government by allocating resources properly. That was more than one word.
Pretty good, though. Pretty good. All right, Dave?
Again, I do think that my role as a commissioner would be primarily to be that voice of the community to the city manager, and also to be a supportive, play a supportive role to that city manager and to his staff. Personally, I see the current commission as a commission that is doing a good job of that very thing, and I would be content to see things continue on as they are. And yet, I know we have a process where new, new people come in and they, they give their talents to that, to those responsibilities, and so I am willing to be that new person to try to add to the, a supportive role to this, our city manager and to his staff. And I kind of have a privilege to be able to do that.
Great, great. All right, wrapping up, role of the city commissioner.
Excuse me, sir? Okay.
I'm getting to you.
Yeah, as a city commissioner, I strongly believe it is vital that we be honest and reliable students to the people's heart and tax dollars. I pledge to work in partnership with our residents, and that we need to foster community pride and develop a vibrant and diversified economy and plan for the future. You know, enriching the quality of life of Atchison for all citizens. You know, I believe in an open government, meaning a government in the global movement, bringing government into the digital age, and in turn, that would, you'd think of apps and tech, of iPhones and data, and open government is the technology we use to revolutionize our government. And through releasing public data, engaging in citizen problem-solving through the Internet, and connecting with other governments to solve our problems. So that's just one of the things that I'd like to support here in the city of Atchison, the tax, community development, and the budget is also a very important factor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question. The city currently faces a gap in available funding to meet the obligations of a consent agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Options include increased utility rates or a new sales tax. What method do you support and why? And Charlie gets to start on this one.
You caught me off-guard on this one. But, okay, first of all, the state or the county of Atchison, which the city of Atchison sits in. Currently, this, that community or that county is either first or second in the highest taxes in the state of Kansas. Therefore, I don't think taxes is going to be the answer to, to that question. But we're going to have to do something to, and as far as the money being spent, I think if we would spend the money wisely and direct the money wisely, you could probably fulfill that gap. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different options. These are, these are questions that I personally never give a thought to, because until I'm addressed with them, then I will find, because out of the years that I served with the unions and different things, I was faced with a lot of questions that I had to go find answers to. And I found the answers, and I won't quit digging until I do find answers. But the gap is, the economy here, the people that live here in Atchison, if you go through the, the population of Atchison, there's so many or a large percentage of the people that are present, or they're on fixed or incomes, draw on some kind of disability, retirement, and everything like that. You just can't continue to ask those people to pay these taxes or continue to ask them to contribute to these situations. That's all. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mike?
Well, both of those options, obviously, are bad options. I think that if, if the commission will selectively take the projects that absolutely have to be done and eliminate the other ones, then I think it would help with this burden. I think if I was forced with a choice, I would rather have a rate increase, because that can be modified later, can go up and down. Of course, it normally goes up, but I realize that there is a big gap, and we need to focus on our equipment, our infrastructure here, and do those things that absolutely need to be done, and make the hard decisions. But as my fellow here was saying, that right now, there's a tremendous gap in what the city understands what we're doing and what the city understands what they're doing. There's, there's a really bad communication between the people in Atchison, and I think that's one thing that needs to be hyphen, is our communication to them, to make them understand exactly the problems that we're dealing with and what, what they think. Of course, you know, most Atchison people say, "I want to lower taxes." That isn't always a possibility, but a rate increase, I think, is, is something that, to me, is obviously that we're going to have to have some kind of rate increase.
Jack?
We had, we had, the city of Atchison had signed an agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment that we had to make improvements on our combined sewer overflow. We had agreed to spend three-point-five million a year on that process for twenty years. There's one-point-five million that's unfunded, and this is what you're leading to. We had to raise one-point-five money. What, what I think should be done is that, first of all, we're going to eliminate all the trash pickup. So trash is about thirteen dollars and fifty cents a month. And then substitute that with a tax on sewer for the combined overflow. So actually, for citizens, there would be no additional tax, because the city will absorb the, the trash, the one percent sales tax, and then the citizens will not have to pay for trash, but they'll pay for the CSO. But the big thing is, now, we have all our businesses in the community that are using sewer, currently are not paying trash, but they would also pick up a approximately, a percentage of their sewer usage. I know that my business does not pay ta, my business does not pay trash. I know that when I, when this goes on, I'm going to pay about three-hundred dollars a year for the, for sewage. So it's a real thing, but there really doesn't have to be a tax. It's almost, it's almost revenue-neutral. You don't pay for trash, you're going to have to pay a CSO fee. So I think it's going to work pretty smoothly that way.
Okay. Dave?
I think it's good to follow a gentleman like this, who's in the trenches, working these things out right now, and, and I, I would just add to what he said in this way. I, I know that having, that we need to be in compliance to our, to the federal government and the regulations that they have put, placed upon us. So that, that is a priority that we need to meet. And I would like to see that met in some way where there's the, the least amount of burden put on the, the townspeople. But we, we've got to make a sacrifice, and I, I, and I am someone who really would like to listen to men like Jack and others that have, have been working on these issues, and really try to settle in my own mind whether a sales tax, whether a rate increase, or whether some other way might be the best way of being in compliance, which we have to be.
Okay, thank you. Luke?
I think that the, that the taxes are going to be a big question, and the CSO project coming up is going to be a, a large question. The, I think the key on the taxes is, is how are we going to get there in the first place? What are we going to look at? Are we going to, you know, in order to build your tax dollars, you're going to have to bring in the businesses, you're going to have to bring in the more people to the community, increase their income, and then all that will come, and then you don't have to rely on raising the taxes. So I think the first thing you got to do is bring the businesses in, bring the economy back up, and then the taxes will follow. The CSO project is going to be a huge thing for the city to be tackling, and it's a problem that is going to go on for years down the road, and, and like Jack said, it was a three-point-five million dollars, and in two thousand and fifteen, they come with agreement with, in nineteen ninety-three, with the Kansas Department of Health, and it's just going to be something we're going to have to deal with. And I think some funding out there, we need to look hard at some of the funding through the state of Kansas, to see if we can tackle that.
Okay, very good. So budget shortfall with the agreement with the state? Rita, you get to wrap it up.
Okay. I agree with everything that everybody said. This is something that Atchison didn't invent itself. This is all over the United States. It's like every city is faced with this, with all the new regulations and compliances, everything, we have to come in with it, and we have to come up with one-point-five million dollars. And our, our current commissioners, we have looked long and hard at this, trying to figure out a way that we're not going to put everybody into a financial difficulty. If we raise, raise the sales tax, and it was said, you know, everybody who comes to Atchison will be paying for it and everything, but then it gets to a point, well, you know, hey, I'll go out of town and buy it because it's cheaper. So you had to take a look at that. So then we took a look at, you know, what about your, your water bills and stuff? So then, because we got our new trash, then we're not going to have a trash fee now, so then we decided, oh, we're going to go this way. So by doing that, then it's, it's basically keeping your water bill just, just a tad bit higher than what it is now. Yes, the businesses, some of the businesses are going to be, well, all the businesses are going to be having a CSO rate where they didn't have a trash fee, and, and I know that's, that's quite a big number on some of them, but this was the best way that we looked at it. And I think we should be proud of what we've got out there, because we have really come a long way on improving our water and improving, and improving our sewer systems. And as the state of Kansas told us the other day, by the time all this is done, we're going to have the best tasting water in Kansas, and I'm pretty proud of that.
All right, thank you. Very good. All right, next, probably one of the hot-button topics that has come up of late, airport expansion. So we're going to start with Mike this time, and the question is, do you support the use of eminent domain to acquire property needed for the proposed expansion? And do you support the use of tax dollars to build a new runway?
I, I started out being totally against the airport, and the more I've talked to people, the more I have come up with kind of a moderate position. I think we should do the airport expansion. I think we ought to support people like MGP, but the funding is the problem that I have that, you know, we don't want to pass this funding on to the taxpayer. The, the funding for the seven-hundred thousand, I think, should be private funding. You know, I bring a case point, the country club out here, the people that pay for the country club, they're the ones that pay for it, not the people of Atchison. So I think that, I think we should do the airport expansion, but I think we should find other ways of funding that part and not charging this against the people of Atchison.
Do you believe in eminent domain to acquire the property?
Yes, and I think the, the people that own that property should be well-paid for, for their land, and I think, somebody told me they have three appraisals, I, I think they should get the highest appraisal for that land.
Okay. All right, Jack?
You want a one-word answer?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
If I were you, I'd be asking three questions. Are you willing to use private, public money to pay for an airport expansion? The second question I'd ask, are you willing to take area residences and use eminent domain to take the property from them? And also, are you willing to take economic-producing land out of our economy? The third question I would ask, have you considered the cost of litigation, of engineering? Have you considered the thing I learned at St. Benedict's College, Economics 101, the opportunity cost of all our city staff spending their time working on an airport instead of streets, parks, sewers, sidewalks, foreign police protection? Those are the questions I'd ask. Now, I've heard people say, there's no evidence that an airport will work. So I've been digging and digging. Now, would most of you agree if a population increases, economics are better, and if it decreases, economics are worse? Would people agree with that? I don't see anybody agreeing. Okay, so let me give you, there are some runways about the same size as what we're proposing. Shute, Kansas, has a 4,200-foot runway. Since they built this airport, their population has dropped by 9.79%.
You said dropped?
Dropped 9.79%. Independence, Kansas, has a 5,500-foot runway, and since it was built, their population's dropped by 16.34%. Now, here's a good one. Burlington built a 5,500-foot runway, and their population's only dropped by 2.23%. And then the one, and our buddies in Nebraska, Fall City, have a 4,000-foot runway, and their population's dropped 30.28% since they dropped it. So I think it would be foolhardy to believe that we should build an airport for economic development. So I'm going to get back to one-word answer. No, I don't support it.
Okay. Dave?
I do support airport expansion. I believe in eminent domain handled properly. I, for our community, understand that the FAA will fund this project, at least 90% of it. We are responsible for 10%. I've heard that even that could change to 95 and 5%. I know that a company like MGP wants that airport, and it's in their best interest to have it. And they have expressed their support of paying a good part, if not all, of what the city would have to spend for that project. I also learned from MGP that they were familiar with a company, and I don't know the name offhand, but it was a company that produced farm machinery and even had, that has as many as 2,000 employees. They wanted to come to Atchison on the condition that there would be an airport, an FAA-approved airport, in order to get them here. I believe that we need to have an FAA-approved airport so that we can have the potential to bring more jobs to this community, which we desperately need. It's going to be a sacrifice, and I also would hope that those whose land we need would be very well compensated for that land for the good of this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back down to Luke.
Yes, I'm in favor of the airport expansion. I think the airport is another one of our gateways to the community. You have to look at it just like the new bridge and all the areas of town, the people come, and it's the first thing they see. People come into town, our airport, the building out there, embarrassed to even show the building to them. It's been in disrepair for a long time. I think that anytime you're running a business, and if somebody went up to you and said, "We're going to give you $7 million, but we're going to cover 90% of it to build your business, and it's going to cost you 10% to build that business," I think that's, I think you have to take advantage of that. On the eminent domain, there's approximately 150 acres of that land that we're talking about, and most of that, and I don't have a percentage, but most of that has been already said that the owner said, "No problem, I'm going to sell," so it won't have to have eminent domain. I agree with these guys that, we need to do it smartly if we are going to do eminent domain, because it is personal to the landowners and stuff. And I think that the bidding process needs to be well-looked at. But I think the airport is vital. There's 1,500 visitors that visit the airport right now. They spend $45 in Atchison. That's just the current airport we have. I think if we build this airport, that figure could, you know, double, even triple, and it would increase jobs and increase the economy for the town.
Okay. Rita?
I think it's a no-brainer. If we're going to spend $1 and get back 10 for every dollar we spend, I think we need to do it. I came to the airport meeting that we had here at City Hall, and after hearing Dave talk from MGP, I did a little searching, and I found out exactly how much money has been lost in Atchison County in the last five years. Because Midwest Grain does not house their plane here, they do not get their fuel here, they do not pay their taxes here, we have in the last five years lost $550,000 in revenue. That by itself, we could have almost paid for what we're needing now. Instead, Midwest Grain's housing their plane in St. Joe, they're paying $110,000 a year up there. We need that here. Also, we have angel flights that go out from out there. I mean, if you've had someone sick or very ill in your family, and you've wanted a plane to come for, to help you with the angel flights, that's awesome, and I don't think people realize that. In listening to the forum that night on the airport, people who said they were not for the airport would stand up there and say, "You know, have you looked at the land over here?" Or, "What about the land back here? Have you looked at that?" Well, to me, when they're saying that, I'm thinking, "Oh, my, you must really be for the airport, but you just don't want it where it's located." And the guy who sat here that night, if the FAA comes in and closes down the airport, and then three, five years down the road, a new commissioner says, "Oh, we need it now, we need it," and then they turn around, and it's going to cost us $12, $15 million. Now, for every dollar we spend, we get 10. Eminent domain, I think, is going to be the way it is. Like Luke said, most of the people said they will sell the land to them, and I think they'll get a good price on it, and I think everybody's going to be happy in the long run. If we build it, the people will come, and I think we'll get some business from it.
Okay. And Charlie?
Well, first of all, I'm totally against the airport, and I need to correct a few things that have been mentioned here. First of all, Luke and some of them have said that the people are in agreement to that. There's one couple or one lady standing back there in the back, I know is totally against it, which has got the largest percentage of the land. I talked to another gentleman, Mr. Horton, today. He has not agreed to the selling of the property. The only ones that are involved with the agreement of selling the property are the Estes', and they want to get rid of that wet ground. Okay. Now, as far as when you come to the usage of the airport, my wife and I flew in the 1980s. We were both involved in the airport in the 80s. At that time, there was about eight or 10 of us that were really involved, and they really, we'd done a lot of stuff. We went to the city to try to get paint for that building or office out there. They wouldn't, they wouldn't even buy the paint. We bought paint, we painted the building. The paint on the building that we put there in the 80s is the same paint that's there today. Now, another thing, when you go back, I've been to the tax rolls at the courthouse. You've got supposedly 15 planes that I can find that are on the airport. There's not a one, not one of those aircraft that are on the tax roll. There is not one thing being paid. As far as it goes with the eminent domain, that is not right. We're in a free country, we should have the right to do what you want to do. You don't force it. And as far as bringing business to the airport or to the city by the airport, my son-in-law sent back there, and he's an international corporate lawyer, you can feel free to ask him, and he'll tell you, an airport is the last thing that will be considered in a company relocating because we're 40 minutes from KCI. That's my answer on that, and I will not change.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, a little bit more personal, starting with Jack, on meeting the challenges of budgeting. What insights and experience do you bring to budgeting? And are you familiar with a municipality budgeting process, which?
Actually, I have been involved in municipality budget for the last six years. Did you want something more than that? I've been involved--
Just your insights and experience in budgeting and how municipality--
Outside of the city room, or?
Yeah, you, I mean, for you and Rita, it's kind of makes sense that you have been doing this, so you have that experience.
Well, I've learned how to budget a lot, both business, personal, and with the City of Atchison. With the city, you come up with your goals, the things you're trying to accomplish. And we usually have a budget meeting that, we have a budget meeting before we actually started the sessions, determining what our goals are. And we have a, we invite citizens in, we have a big brainstorming, and we come up with the most important things for the city for the next year. In 2014, then you pass a resolution. These are the resolutions, they're public record. Here's 2014, here's 2015. There's all the goals of the city. It's amazing that after we had all those meetings, the mention of an airport is not on the goals of the city for budgeting. So yes, I'm very familiar with budgeting, but you can't budget for something that we didn't even want to do.
Okay. Dave?
Again, I am someone who has been self-employed for over 45 years, and I know the importance of a budget. I know it on a small scale as a general contractor. I don't know it on the large scale for the city. But I believe that the principles that I've worked under as a self-employed contractor, those same principles apply to the bigger budgets, and I would like to be one who applies those principles to the best interests of Atchison.
Okay, good. Luke?
Yeah, I think the, I think the budget that we have is a good budget, but I think there is room to look at that a little closer, and try to get maybe some more outside influences to find out what we can do to streamline the budget. It's just like any business that you have and you operate. In order to make money, you have to spend money, and I think that's very important. And without getting into, getting the tax dollars too out of focus, but I think the budget we have is a good budget, but we do need to look it over with a fine line every time.
You want to say anything about your personal background, experience in budgeting, finance, things like that?
Just small budgets, nothing on this large a scale, but I'm willing to jump into this and do my homework and do what it takes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rita?
Of course, I've been on the city commission for 12 years, so I know what their budget is, and for experience, I've ran the bracket and credit union forever, and I have an $8 million budget down there, and so I know that you've got to have your assets and liabilities and everything. Eight million may seem small to what the city does, but when us commissioners come in for our first budget meeting, we take a look at what we're wanting, and each one will voice which project they think is more important, and we go on down to what's less important, and then we discuss it and decide which way we want to go with it. Then we have groups and organizations and individuals can come in to and say, you know, "Hey, you might consider this in your budget." So then we listen to them and hear what's most important on the other side out there, and then we come back, and I know this year, I said, "Trey, I'm going to tell you, I'm not voting for anything that will raise the mill levy. We're not raising taxes." And so then he knew that his budget he had to work with, that we were going to keep it right there and not raise the taxes, and he knew what he had to work with. And so what we do is we see what's most important and what has to be done, meeting compliance and rules and regulations, and then we can look on into the future, and we can do a budget three or four years ahead of time and put something out a little further. I think the city has some really good people working on the budget, and I'm pretty pleased with it.
Okay, very good. Charlie?
As far as budgeting goes, with the farming operations that we have, we reach all the way across the state of Kansas, from the Colorado line to the Missouri line. So we're dealing with some pretty good-sized budgets. We're dealing with a lot of counties in this, in fact, we're dealing with six counties or five counties across the state here. So budgeting is, I'm familiar with that, and I can, I'll work with that. The other thing is, we've, with the experience or the time that I've had with Eagle Federal Credit Union and served there, we've budgeted, we've worked with budgets for years and years and years. But the thing that I see with the city, and this is from me looking in from some of the meetings that I've set in here, I don't think there's really, at times, a budget plays a part. I mean, we'll do it, we can take it from one, we'll take it from one portion of the general funds. The biggest thing is, we stick all the money in the general fund, therefore, we can all jump back and forth, rather than put it where it's supposed to be and make them stay within the budget. Okay? Otherwise, if we put it in a general fund, somebody, that money that was allocated for that certain person or that certain project, they are going to fall short because somebody else is, you know, it's kind of like this, the squealing pig is the one that's going to get the results. Okay? And I've seen that, and I went through one meeting, I sat here and watched, for example, they spent a million and four, million and four in less than 35 minutes here. Now, you can't explain to me how you can justify that. That's it.
Okay. Mike?
In 2001, I was called by a company overseas, and what they needed was a project electrical engineer for a project in Romania, and the project involved rehabilitating their power and their water treatment facilities. This was funded by the World Bank. There was a budget, we were expected to keep within that budget. As a project engineer, the budget was always an issue because we had to decide what kind of equipment, at what price, and then dealing with the contractor to make sure that he was within budget. This was quite a process. It was an $800 million job. But that was just one example. I've had just about every job that I've had at nuclear plants involved coming to me as a project electrical and saying, "We want this new emergency water system, and here is our budget. You are the engineer, you're to have a team of people, and you are to keep within that budget." This is part and parcel of what I was called to do, not only make sure that the design was adequate and ensure that the design was effectual, but to be within the budget. And if it wasn't in the budget, then I would be the one to pay for it. As a consultant, we were highly paid, and they wouldn't think twice of letting people go if they didn't perform as they were required to. So to answer that question, I've dealt with budgets, and usually in multiple-million-dollar ranges in the nuclear and fossil plant.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next question, the city contracts with the Chamber of Commerce and funds a tourism program. Next question, the city contracts with the Chamber of Commerce and funds a tourism program. Do you support the chamber's current activities, and how important do you think tourism is to Atchison? Start with Dave.
I think tourism is very important to Atchison. We are, we are a community that has many attractions, and people need to be brought here to see what we have and appreciate what we have. So, the chamber plays a big role in promoting the tourism in this town. What was the second part of that?
Well, just how, if you supported the chamber's current activities regarding that, and then how important is it?
Over the time that I have been here in Atchison, I have seen the chamber, and I have supported the chamber in many of their endeavors, and I think they've done a very good job. I think that they, each of the themes that they choose need to be well thought out, and I know currently there is a haunted theme that has brought a lot of unrest to many of the people in Atchison, and I think that that's a theme that needs to really be looked at carefully and analyzed, and we need to make that as good as we can make that for the people of Atchison. And if it's not good for Atchison, I don't think we should have that.
Okay.
Is there another part to that that I'm missing?
No, it was just the support of the current activities and how important you think tourism was. I think you've answered both of those. Okay? Luke?
Yeah, I think the Chamber of Commerce is vital to the city of Atchison. I think that they're another one of our gateways, that the people from out of town come to town, and the chamber is there to show 'em our town and promote our town, and we have to have that. Not only does the chamber do that, it promotes things for in our city, for our projects in the city and activities and things. I think the chamber's doing a great job, and support 'em a hundred percent. We need 'em. They're vital.
Any thoughts about tourism and its-
Yeah, they do a great job on the tourism. I think that it's just like any project, you need to look at the big picture, see where there's ways we can increase that and make more tourism in Atchison. So, thank you.
Rita?
I support the chamber one hundred percent. I think they do an awesome job. Amelia Earhart Festival, I mean, look at the crowds we get in here that week. I know a lot of people that will come in just for that weekend, they can't get into certain stores downtown or take that walk on the River Road because the crowds are so big, so they'll come back, you know, a month later or two months later, or they'll tell their family about it for the next year to come back for the fireworks and stuff. I know my husband and I have been on vacation places and, you know, say where you're from. "Oh, you're from Atchison, Kansas. That's where Amelia Earhart is," and they get really excited and talk about it. I think Jackie and her crew out there do a wonderful job promoting tourism here in town. We try to get more and more events, trying to get more and more people coming here to town. We just had the disc golf in Jackson Park, and we had almost a hundred people. It's the first time we've ever done it. I think we can improve on it and get more out there. I wish we could give the chamber more money so they could have more events and get more people in here, because my feeling is, is if the people come once, they're gonna come again, they're gonna bring other people, they're gonna spend their money here. Who knows? They may end up moving here or moving close to the area. They could open a business, and that's what we're needing. We're needing some new businesses, and I think the chamber's gonna help us get that.
All right. Thank you. Charlie?
Well, I'm in agreeable with the chamber. I think the chamber's doing a reasonably good job. But at the same time, I looked at a budget thing today, the chamber receives about two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars a year, two oh five, I believe, if I remember right, that's allocated to them by the city. I think that they're doing good, but at the same time, I would say they could do a lot better. I mean, the tourism, we've gotta bring people to town, but at the same time, at the same time, we've been talking about the economy and the growth in Atchison. The chamber, the last city commissioners' meeting I sat in here, there was discussion about the conference center out here, which is pretty much in the red, and they owned up to it. The finance director owned up that there was no way that the conference center, the heritage, whatever you wanna call it, 'cause they wanna change names, will ever be able to operate on its own. It'll never be profitable. It'll never pay for the cost. To me, this is something that the chamber really needs to put emphasis on, is selling the conference center or the convention center, the conference center. I mean, they're the ones that are supposed to market the city. It's not the commissioners, it's not that. It's the Chamber of Commerce that should be marketing the city, and I'm in agreement with the chamber. We need a chamber, and I just think that it could be used more wisely.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
I think they've done a tremendous job. Amelia Earhart, all the places that I've lived in the United States and all the jobs that I've had, this is one of the most outstanding projects that I have seen, and the people that come. So, you know, I grade them really high, and that, on the mall projects and the little kiosks that are set up, and I'm just really, really pleased with that. There is, however, a concern, and my brother Dave mentioned it, I don't want Atchison associated with witchcraft and mediums and channeling. This type of thing, I think, draws the wrong type of people to Atchison. I think there could be a better way of coming up with something different, and I'd be willing to even sit down with them and brainstorm, but I, and you know what, we've talked to people in Benedictine, and they're very insulted about this whole thing. Abbott James and Jeremy and Father Gabriel, they're very concerned about this, and it seems to be growing. I think it started out as kind of a cutesy type of thing, but it's grown more and more insidious, as we got people moving in Atchison that are really heavy chargers. And that would be the one thing that I would change, and ask the chamber to come up with something that puts a positive spin on Atchison. And I think we have a lot of things, you know, to be proud of that we could pick a better subject.
All right. Thanks. Jack?
The Atchison Chamber of Commerce is funded basically by two things. The bed tax, which I know Jackie's happy that I pushed to get raised by two percent about six years ago, I think it produces somewhere around a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars a year for the chamber. So, that doesn't come from city coffers, that's coming from tax that is designated for tourism. And then they're given eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, if I'm teaching marketing to a bunch of Marketing 101 students, I would say, "What does a flower shop sell?" And they would say, "Flowers." No, that's not what they're selling. They're selling, "I love you, congratulations, I'm sorry." Well, what the Chamber of Commerce has to do is to sell experience. What is it like to come here? And I think they're trying to do the best job they can to sell that experience.
All right. Next question. Start back down at this end of the table. Downtown revitalization has been a firm goal of the city commission. How do you think that can be best accomplished? What are your thoughts about downtown revitalization?
I think the downtown revitalization is a tough thing for all cities. We've seen lots of cities around the country that the downtowns have died, and they've moved to the outskirts of their malls, and so have, it's a tough thing. I need to look into it more, need to look at the current project that they have. I do not have that in front of me, but I think we should try to save our downtown, and it's got a lot of history, and I just need to look into it a little more, but I think we should save it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rita?
Downtown revitalization. We've worked on that for many years. We've tried to give some of the businesses a break on taxes and get their new facades up and everything. Mom-and-pop shops go great in downtowns. You can go to other little cities, and they got lots of mom-and-pop shops, and they're just terrific. We've got some vacant buildings down there. We're working really hard right now trying to get more in. We've taken a proactive way this year by hiring Susan Turnbull, and she's getting more and more events down there, which is drawing more and more people down there. We have the college that has eighteen-hundred students. I'd like to see us get the college students more involved and get events down on the mall and use it more. When we have an event, we have a good event. When we have a tasting event or something, they're all down there. But I think we need to work with the individuals here in town that have that little, just in the back of their mind, "I'd like to open a little business, but I'm really scared to," and I think we need to find out who those individuals are and get 'em down there and open up, get all the stores filled downtown, and get a movie theater back in here and everything, and fill 'em all up and get people to come to Atchison, and once you get a little niche and the people come, they're gonna keep coming, so.
Okay. Charlie?
I'd like to see downtown revised and brought back. I mean, I can remember, like I said, I grew up here. I can remember the downtown before the mall came in. There was every store, you had all kinds of stores. You had J.C. Penney's, you had Ward's, you had Kresge's, Walgreens, or Walworth's, TGNY. You had all kinds of stores down there on the mall, clothing stores, shoe stores. You know, that's the bad thing for the gentleman. You cannot go here in Atchison, any place, and buy a pair of dress pants. They're not available to you. You can go to Walmart, you can buy something out there, that's not dress pants. But, I mean, I'd like to see it. We really need to do it. Now, the other thing that Rita was talking about and Luke, the businesses downtown, all right, you, to me, in my opinion, and when I look at it on the financial side of it, you cannot count office space as a business. The revenue is not coming off of an office space. Take and look downtown on the mall and look at the stores that are just strictly office spaces. They're not a retail store and stuff. That's like, we sat through a meeting, I went to a meeting that involved a college. The students, they had a survey, they were talking about. Basically, when you talk about the college survey, the kids were at Maria's, they were at Snowball's, they were at McDonald's, Dairy Queen, and basically, once you got past Pete's or Swizer's until they got down to the Sacred Heart Thrift Store, they didn't attend any of the businesses. So, that's the only way. You're gonna have to get the college kids, those kids are gonna have to come down here, and I don't think we're making any effort to try to bring 'em down, so.
Okay.
I think when the mall was initially put in, I think it was very, very successful. I guess it was nineteen sixties. It served a tremendous purpose, but subsequent to that time, I think it served, it should be phased out. Talking to the business owners down there, they would like to have the road put back in where the mall is, so that they have people with better access to the businesses. So, I think this has to be done in stages, because it's gonna be very expensive, but we should listen to the businesses down there, and they're saying that the mall needs to be moved out. As far as the Benedictine students, my wife and I rent to some of these students. They're nocturnal people. They wake up at ten o'clock at night and stay up all night. That's good for them, but it's bad for old folks like me. But I guess what I'm saying is that we need to be sensitive and come up with things like restaurants and places where they can get their-